Here, so. As then people got extra room, they got.
Good morning. Welcome to the October twelfth, twenty twenty-two council meeting. Uh, we will be led by uh, Madam Clerk with prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, prior to that, I apologize if you have a phone, cell phone, mobile device, anything that might ring, make noise, please put it on silent, vibrate, or off. Thank you, Amanda.
Sorry about that. Please put your cell phones on silent, vibrate, or off. Again, we'll be led um, by Madam Clerk uh, with pled- with prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. You guys, let you stand, please.
O God almighty, wisdom and justice, through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted and judgment decreed. Assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we preside. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, reminder for those who may be looking to uh, provide public comments. Um, we have a sign-in sheet at the podium. Uh, so we ask that you just uh, go over there, put your name and address uh, in the sign-in sheet. And once we get to that part of the agenda, we'll make sure to uh, that you come up to the podium to voice your comments, concerns, or or appreciation, of course. Um, with that, Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Here.
Wes?
Present.
Roots?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Present. Ask for the approval of minutes.
Still moved.
And second?
All good. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes. At this moment, we'll ask anyone in the public who may have uh, comments on action and or agenda items only, uh, please come to the podium. Again, there are uh, agendas at the podium as well, so if you don't have one, please get one. Um, but if you have any questions, comments, or uh, on agenda items only, you may go to the podium at the moment. Hearing the CNN, Madam Clerk?
Resolution, whereas the following individual has requested a handicap parking zone. Joyce C. Morse, twenty-five thirteen West Seventh Street, Chester, PA nineteen oh thirteen. Whereas after a thorough investigation by the Department of Public Works, it has been determined the aforementioned individual has met all of the required criteria and has a need for said handicap parking zone. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install a handicap parking zone in the twenty-five hundred block of West Seventh Street in the City of Chester.
Still moved, second.
Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the appointment of Collier Barrett to the position of Laborer, Department of Public Works, effective October the eleventh, twenty twenty-two. No benefits for forty hours per week and with a sixty-day probationary period.
Still moved, second.
Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the appointment of Ronald Allen to the position of Laborer, Department of Public Works, effective October the eleventh, twenty twenty-two. No benefits for forty hours per week and with a sixty-day probationary period.
Still moved, second.
Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the appointment of John Robertson to the position of Laborer, Department of Public Works, effective October the eleventh, twenty twenty-two. No benefits for forty hours per week and with a sixty-day probationary period.
Still moved, second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the appointment of Amir Simpson to the position of Electrical Inspector, License and Inspection Department, effective October third, twenty twenty-two. No benefits for thirty-seven point five hours per week with a ninety-day probationary period. Father said individual will be benefit eligible after sixty days of employment.
Still moved, second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint Sam Williams as a member of the Chester Economic Development Authority to fill the unexpired term of Anita Taylor, term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Still moved, second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes, yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that in accordance with recommendations of the Chester City Planning Commission, dated September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and reviewed by the Delaware County Planning Commission on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, it does hereby grant final approval to Chester Charter Scholars Academy to construct a five thousand seven hundred and twenty square foot addition to the existing school building as shown on a plan prepared by Panoni and Associates, nineteen hundred Marcus Street, Philadelphia, PA, one-nine-one-oh-three, dated August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Still moved, second.
Are there any questions?
Uh, I would like to ask the people representing the Chester Charter Scholars Academy, just to give us a brief overview of what this addition is, because we don't, we don't see it here. And it'd be good for public record. Yeah, the microphone would be great.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Bob Scott, the attorney for the project.
Uh, Michael Kinsley, representing Lynn Architects, the architect for the project.
And it's, this is classroom space. There is currently um.
Look closer, closer to the mic.
There uh, uh, schools currently using some modular units. Uh, and this is uh, an addition that will provide additional classroom space.
Uh, just to clarify, the, the, the space will be used for uh, educational support services, mainly uh, math, reading, um, it's not intended to actually add capacity to the school. Um, it's more in the support, uh, support area.
When is the project, I guess, uh, slated to begin and how long does it, I guess, take to its uh, finish date?
We're, we're ready to begin as soon as uh, as soon as we get the building permit and the, the approval on the land development.
Okay.
The process, I'm, I'm not sure, it could be eight to twelve months, much.
Yeah, so we're just moving uh, it's a temporary modular trailers, I guess we call them, into physical space that matches to the building.
Exactly.
That's correct. The, the, um, the proposed plan uh, would actually remove the uh, the temporary modular classrooms.
Great.
And it's all interior construction, it's not particularly visible from the street, it's kind of behind the existing building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas Delaware County Council has established a Delco Greenways Grant Program to be utilized by the municipalities of Delaware County. And whereas the Delco Greenways Grants may be used by the municipality for the improvement or acquisition of recreation land or planning services for such activities. And whereas the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, desires to participate in the Delco Greenways Grant Program to fund Chester Creek Trail, Park Manor Connector. And whereas the municipality will have available any and all funding needed to complete this project. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve, number one, that the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, hereby approves the filing of an application for the Delaware County Municipal Grant Program Assistance. And number two, that the City of Chester is hereby authorized and directed to execute and file the appropriate forms with the Delaware County Planning Department.
Still moved, second.
Are there any questions?
Uh, I'd like my Galante to come up and just explain what this is all about. We're uh, expanding the trail system throughout Chester in a nutshell, but a little more detail might be warranted.
Yeah, so this is Delco Greenways Grant Round Three that we're applying for. We previously applied for uh, Greenways Grant Round Two to construct a section of Crozier Park Trail that is completely designed and permitted. Uh, that section is going to extend from Incinerator Road at Chester Township over to Curlin Street. This section of trail, we're calling it the Parker Manor Connector. It goes through that neighborhood across from Curlin Street, I think it's Park Villas. Um, I've always been told it was Parker Manor, so I went with that name. Um, and that, this section of trail will take the trail down, down Thirteenth Street to the creek, up to the I ninety-five bridge. So that's the section that we're applying for now. Uh, one of the things that is good about this project, that gives us a lot of uh, help with the county, is that it's fully designed, fully permitted. So, once we get the funding, we can hit the ground running. Um, and ultimately, when this trail is completed, it'll be, there'll be a full connection from Crozier Park down through to Air Park. And then there's also bigger plans to connect the trail through the downtown down to the East Coast Greenway, which Peter Reichert is working on with Lisa Gaffney, uh, working on different planning grants to get that upfront engineering planning work done. Uh, and you know, so it's kind of, it's a, it's a pretty big thing, it's a Chester Creek Trail, it's a circuit trail. And also, we also apply for other grants like DCNR, so that there's no cost um, to the, to, to the city. So, that's the goal, we don't want to have any, we, we don't have any capital funds, so we do everything through the grants and it's, you know, no, no additional burden to the city, just better, more recreation improvements for the residents. So.
And it is Parker Manor, that section?
It is Parker Manor, yeah, I, I, it's, yeah, I, I see Park Villas in some of our planning documents and I, I always was told it was Parker Manor.
And this has been in the works for a while.
We've been working on this project through design and permitting since around twenty fourteen. So, we've built sections, um, there's a section built in Air Park uh, at, you know, the, on, on top of the levee, there's also a section that was built uh, by the Stormwater Authority uh, on Air Drive. So, it's, it's an ongoing, long-term project and it's, it's a good recreational benefit to the community, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So ultimately, what we'll have is a place to take a long walk, you know, throughout the city. It's in pieces now, you look at the waterfront, we have that piece that goes straight down the river. Ultimately, that will connect to this piece, which connects to Air Park, which will go over to, in, in the downtown area. So, I guess a full loop is probably five, six, seven miles? When we all get it, when, when it all?
It's gonna be really, really, uh, with all the work going down on two ninety-one with the East Coast Greenway and, and tying this into that, it's gonna be, yeah, easily seven miles.
Great.
So. Um, that's something, you know, as we go through planning, we can look at that, but as, as far as these phases right now, I don't know if there's any cameras specifically in the, in the plan right now, but that's something that we would, as we go through planning and if we get the grant, we can, we can add on if we have the funding. Yep, thanks.
Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does approve and order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance and is shown on expenditure approval list dated October fourth, twenty twenty-two and October seventh, twenty twenty-two, attached hereto and made apart herof, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance.
Still moved, second.
Um, are there any questions? And I, I asked that if, yesterday we had deliberative, which is a little different from normal because of the holiday on Monday. Uh, so, members of council uh, did not have full, well, a, a good amount of time to view uh, the expenditure list. Uh, the expenditure list was sent to American, members of council uh, yesterday evening. Um, so I'm asking that if anyone on council has any questions that they were not able to ask and or comment from yesterday or from their review from last night into this morning, uh, that you most certainly have the floor now to ask any question that you may or may not have. So, I'm just gonna give a, that moment for the, right now.
Well, that's, that's nice. I did have some questions, but the detail in today's report answered all my questions.
Okay.
A lot more detailed than.
Than previous?
The summary.
Gotcha. I'll make sure that they continue to add the, the descriptions of them all. Any other questions or?
No.
May I?
I reviewed mine and I was fine.
Thank you. Good. All right. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. I see that we have a few present, presentations. Uh, so I'll pass the mic back to yourself.
I guess, yeah, I have the white cane, okay. City of Chester Proclamation, Celebration of White Cane Month. Whereas in Pennsylvania and across the nation, October celebrates the independence of people who are blind or visually impaired. Whereas White Cane Month is a time to raise public awareness of these important mobility tools for people who are blind or visually impaired. Whereas the original purpose was a safety reminder to promote courtesy and special consideration to blind people who are navigating America's streets and roadways. Whereas since this first observance, it has taken on greater meaning as a time to celebrate the self-sufficiency of people who are blind or visually impaired and their right to participate fully in society. Whereas the Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired, otherwise known as CBVI, continues the tradition, focusing on the independence of people who are blind or visually impaired with the white cane as a symbol of that independence. Whereas Pennsylvania's White Cane Law states, "The driver of a vehicle shall yield the right of way to any totally or partially blind pedestrian can ta- excuse me, carrying a clearly visible white cane or accompanied by a guide dog and shall take such precautions as may be necessary to avoid injuring or endangering the pedestrian. And if necessary, shall stop the vehicle in order to prevent or prevent an injury or danger to the pedestrian." Whereas CBVI seeks to heighten awareness about the lives of individuals who are blind and visually impaired in our communities and the degree of autonomy they achieve through rehabilitation and training. Whereas Candy Bannum, Prevention of Blindness Specialist at CBVI said, "We hope that sighted individuals will learn something new about the white cane, guide dogs, and the people who use them." Now therefore, I, Mayor Thaddeus Kirkland and the council members of the City of Chester do hereby recognize October twenty twenty-two as White Cane Month in recognition of the Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired Mission and services for individuals with blindness and visual impairment.
I think we have representatives here. Um, if you don't mind, please come to the front. Do, do you have something with some comments?
Hi, I'm Monica Jones, the Administrator, Director at the Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired. And with me, we have one of our clients slash employees, uh, Thomas Campbell and Candy Bannum, which is our Prevention of Blindness Specialist. And on behalf of Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired, we thank you for, um, continuing to observe uh, white cane day. Um, I just want to share a little poem with you, it says, "My white cane, this is my cane and it's my trusted friend."
Sorry, if you don't mind, can you speak a little bit?
I'm sorry. "This is my cane and it's my trusted friend, from the strap on the top to the tip on the end. I take it with me when I start my day, I use it to find things that are in my way. Tap, I found a pole and I go around it, moving my cane smoothly to scan the ground. Whoops, what is that? I stopped in my tracks, oh, I just found some real big cracks. I can't, I can step carefully, cause I don't want to fall, but with my cane in my hand, I'm walking tall. Hey, did I find something new? The cane tip went down and I think that's a clue. Oh, that's a curb, but no big deal, I know it's there, I know by feel. So it's Happy White Cane Day and we'll have many more. My white cane and I are off to explore. So we thank you for recognizing White Cane Day, which is the whole month, but we observe it on October the fifteenth. Thank you."
Come to the front, we'll take some pictures. Um, I know myself, ma- uh, members of council are always honored to uh, celebrate White Cane Month uh, here with you all. Uh, we do have blind and visually impaired individuals in our community and they are just as important uh, as anyone else, so. Uh, thankful for you all to be here every year in front of us all, so, and so that we can celebrate together, so, thank you.
And I, I was so impressed with the facility when I came over for a tour. Um, it's, it's amazing how you teach new persons coming in to how to navigate in their homes and outside as well. And I was so impressed with the um, what you had to offer those persons who are not, you know, who have lost their sight. And uh, it's amazing the work that you do. I really appreciate you, Mayor and Council, we appreciate all of the work that you do here on the state.
Yeah, I'd like to share that sentiment. Uh, I've been in the blind center, I've seen the work that you do, I encourage everybody to visit and see the fine work that's being done. And in that proclamation was some very important information with regard to recognizing the white cane and those that are impaired. For those of you who don't know, that center is right over there by the Salvation Army, is that Fifteenth Street, Sixteenth? Fifteenth Street. So, be especially careful, you know, in that area as they travel, you know, back and forth, that's extremely important. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Um, next up for our presentations, we'll have the Health Department with our COVID uh, update. Uh, Ms. Iona King and Ms. Rosetta Carter.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Pennsylvania Department of Health reports that there have been thirty-nine COVID-nineteen cases in Chester in October so far. Research experts believe that the number of cases is undercounted, given the common use of at-home tests. The CDC has also reported fifty cases of monkeypox in the state of Pennsylvania since the last council meeting on September twenty-eighth. Delaware County is currently experiencing a medium level of COVID-nineteen transmissions. According to the CDC, people may choose to mask at any time. Those at high risk for severe illness, those with symptoms, a positive test, or exposure to someone with COVID-nineteen should wear a mask. On October thirteenth, we will be having a health partner's luncheon in the Chester City Hall Community Room and a vaccine and booster clinic in the computer room from eleven to two. On October twentieth, we will have a breast cancer awareness luncheon from eleven to two-thirty at the Keystone First Wellness Center at one-nine-two-nine West Ninth Street. On October twenty-third, the Health Department will be partnering with the Fire Department for a free Narcan distrib- distribution event from twelve to two at three-twenty East Fourteenth Street. Our billboard, which is sponsored by Road Fabricators for Cancer Awareness Month is up. Also, if anyone needs COVID-nineteen test kits, there are some available downstairs on the tables. Finally, COVID-nineteen vaccinations and boosters are available on October twenty-fourth and November seventh from eleven to five PM at the Delaware County Health Center located at one-five-one West, West Fifth Street. Walk-ins are offered, but you are encouraged to schedule an appointment by calling You can al- you can also always go to vaccines.gov for the most up-to-date appointment availability for vaccines and boosters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. King and the entire Health Department for continuing to provide the public with much-needed uh, information uh, surrounding uh, monkeypox, COVID-nineteen, whatever it is, and also offering those uh, resources of the community of where they can go get the testing and the vaccinations at as well. Uh, just to provide another reminder, if you are going, looking to speak uh, for public comments, please go to the podium and sign your name and address. Uh, we'll be uh, collecting that document uh, momentarily uh, to um, call out the individuals that is looking to provide public comments to council, so. Um, at this time, um, like last meeting, we did a little shakeup there. Prior to the public comments, um, I would like to offer council the opportunity to provide their updates or comments that they may have, so. With that, I'm going to turn to my left and, and ask Councilman Roots if you have anything to add.
Uh, very quickly, I'd like to share that uh, yesterday, there was an event in Darby. Here I am, a Chester councilperson talking about Darby. But it was a phenomenal event called Delco Night Out. The young lady is a restauranteer who put it together, her name is Shug, does anyone know her full name?
I do not.
Okay. But what it was, was a, an assembly of, of black businesses in a sort of a uh, event space, everyone had booths and tables. So well represented by Chester entrepreneurs, artists. Uh, Nasser Leach was in, one of the MCs, Aunt Bee was there with her food, CNP Radio was broadcasting live. Uh, Chester artists were doing live paintings while we were there, Entrepreneurial Works was represented, and if I missed anybody, I'm sorry. That event is going, is, is planning to go from community to community, so it kicked off yesterday, it was phenomenal. I think I saw my man, Councilman Morgan there as well. Uh, what, what did you think about it?
I thought it was awesome. I was so happy to see a lot of people that, you know, represented the City of Chester, represented us and was small business entrepreneurs and just having another opportunity to get out of the, I guess, out of their storefront or get from behind of a, behind a computer and just get out and, and mix and mingle with everybody, so I did think it was a, a awesome and phenomenal uh, turn, turnout. I think that was the first one?
That was the first one.
So hopefully they continue to do it, or maybe even do it more often, but uh, I thi- I thought it was very dope to see.
Secondly, I'd like to say that we did complete that uh, Kaboom Playground in Sun Village Park. I encourage you guys just to drive straight down Ninth Street, you won't be able to miss it right before you go over the Eddie Stone Bridge. I went by there yesterday and I saw just what I wanted to see, a father pull over because he saw it and two kids jump out the car and play on the playset. I want to thank uh, Dwayne Lee, Public Works Department, who did a phenomenal job helping us with the logistics. It, it was an amazing accomplishment by everybody involved, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
I don't have anything today.
Okay. Councilman, you have anything?
Hi, yes. I would like to um, send uh, get web wash- wishes to my uh, fire, fighters.
to my uh, fire fighters that were injured this weekend. Um, firefighter Lamont, Captain Ryan and Captain Paul. And I would like to wish them good well and get well soon. Also, I would like to make a request as a councilperson here from the city of Chester, I would like to make a request that the receiver presents the agreement that he made with Wyner University and he signed on September the first. I would like for him to, to present that at a citywide meeting. So everyone in the community can know what he signed with Wyner University in reference to the city of Chester.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, I have a few quick ones as well. I'll be really quick and brief so we can open up to the public. Uh, very fast, I'm just gonna comment for Councilwoman, Councilwoman Weston and say anything, but I think her de- her department is doing a great job in the community. And one of the things that, a project that she's been working on with Mike Galante and her department is the light project, the city streetlights project. Uh, Mike Galante mentioned last week that it was like ninety-eight percent uh, completed. I'm thinking that today it might be a hundred percent completed, but nonetheless, uh, we're, we're at, we're close to that end date. And if you ride through the city of Chester after, well, soon enough, it'll be after like five o'clock, it'll be dark out. But if you ride through the city of Chester, um, you'll see that the city of Chester lights and the streets are, are brightened up with the other, the new LED lighting throughout the uh, community. So. Thank you, Councilwoman. The Streets Department, Mike Galante, the engineer and everything, uh, for the work that you all have done and, and trying to see and uh, project through. And Peter Reichert as well in the Planning Department. So, thank you. Um, now back to some of the things that I wanna mention about, um, there's a flyer up there. There's a lot of flyers up there, but there's a flyer up there about the American Rescue Plan. On next Tuesday, October eleventh, uh, we're gonna have a community meeting here uh, to talk about the up, or provide updates about the American Rescue Plan. Uh, last meeting was in July. Uh, we're ju- providing an update uh, on some of the questions or comments that were uh, asked or presented to us, um, and to provide some of the information about the budget as well. The flyer that you see, it, it has a, a, a time of four-thirty P M. Scratch that off. It's actually five P M. Eighteenth, October eighteenth, five P M. So the flyer was completely wrong. I apologize. We're gonna make it right. If you look on our website, it does say October eighteenth and it does say five P M. Um, the wrong flyer, I believe, was uh, was pr- was printed out and provided here, which is an error, but we'll get it right. So. October eighteenth at five P M, October eighteen, five P M, next Tuesday, American Rescue Plan is gonna be right here in the council chambers so that we can provide the updates to the community. Um, next is uh, quickly on parking. Last week, if you, well, not last week, the last council meeting, if you were here, uh, there were a little, there was a little confusion and discussion on what was said or what was had or approved upon. Uh, members of council that was present at that meeting decided to table uh, uh, an RFP to advertise an RFP to uh, look for a parking manager to manage the parking in the city of Chester, such as the, I guess, the poles or meters. Uh, and other, I guess, on-street parking excluding uh, Wyner University. So members of council or some members of council decided to table that for further discussion. Uh, we did have a conver- a meeting with uh, the receivers team and members of council all uh, joined in on uh, that meeting to discuss, um, I guess, our questions, comments and concerns. Uh, we were able to get some things answered. Uh, so please look out for more information regarding the next steps that the city is looking to or to not take um, with the uh, the parking within the city of Chester. I'll be the first to say, I'm not sure if anybody else feel this way, but I think the city does have a parking issue. Whether it's in a residential area, I think I, in my neighborhood, I have a neighbor who has maybe about three or four vehicles. Um, and you know, that's just, and I'll just leave it at that. Uh, we know what's going on in the, the Sun Hill session, section and in the Crozier er, uh, Crozier area as well. So there is a parking issue and not to mention in the downtown area as our downtown begins to evolve and more businesses begin to uh, establish themselves in our downtown area. There's gonna be a lot more uh, traffic here as well. So we need to continue to come up with uh, innovative and creative ways to improve uh, our parking uh, issues that we have. Um, it's not gonna get fixed overnight, but I do know that we have some things that are in the works to try to help mitigate the parking issue. So again, please be on a, a lookout and, and keep your ears open for more information that's gonna be happening uh, surrounding parking. Uh, last two quick things, I know I said I'd be brief, but jobs, jobs, jobs. We have uh, vacant job opportunities, career opportunities here in the city of Chester, whether it's police, fire and/or a, uh, the finance department and public works. Next time, we gonna keep them rolling. Um, when the next time we put the applications out, if you're a local resident, if you're somebody that's looking to join the team, become a, a career in policing, fire, please, 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 uh, look into the city of Chester and to join our forces. Um, and then of course, in a finance department, we have some positions available. So just go to our website at ChesterCity.com and look at the jobs tab so you can uh, potentially apply for those opportunities. My last one, I'm sorry, Philadelphia Union. Last week, uh, the Philadelphia Union announced a huge investment into the waterfront, into the community, into the youth, into families, as they're taking the first stab at trying to uh, look to develop the undeveloped uh, Chester waterfront that we have. So uh, the, it's a project that's gonna cost fifty-plus billion dollars for them to fully develop uh, with some outdoor uh, fo- soccer, lacrosse-type fields in a field house that will encompass basketball courts. I know a lot of people didn't think that, but it will encompass ba- basketball courts. So uh, I'm thankful that members of council, mayor and council was a part of those discussions. Chester Blaine School District was a part of those discussions, of course, the Philadelphia Union and other stakeholders. And we've been able to do a great job over the last really four years to try to come up with something like this. And this is, that, that isn't the end. That, that's just a, a stepping stool to get to the next steps of what our waterfront needs to support our residents, whether that's food, whether that's uh, more lounging areas for individuals to, to walk and run. Uh, but it's a, a great opportunity for our community. And yes, there'll be more to come about what this means for Chester youth sports. But of course, um, mayor and council would not engage in conversations if we didn't believe that, we didn't know that uh, we will put our best effort forth to make sure that there were a certain amount of hours that uh, whether it's Chester Biddy or Chester Clippers, will be able to uh, have in those facilities. So those discussions were very, very fruitful. And I'm excited to say that we were all a part uh, of that announcement. Um, and there are, again, more and bigger things to come. So. With that, I'll be quiet. Um, I'm gonna go and get the sign-in sheet for the public comments.
In addition to that great announcement from the Philadelphia Union, I think it's important to note that we're, that, the Philadelphia Union is not getting any tax breaks. Nor is the city writing a check. No, no public funds from us. This is the Philadelphia Union using their money to help our waterfront.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, so the first person I have on the list is uh, Ms. Candy Bantam.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Um, first giving glory and honor to God, I am delighted to be in Chester City Council again. I've been here many times. And very grateful to have been able to hold my position at the blind center for forty-plus years. I think it's incredible that the council, the city council of Chester does recognize the white cli- cane proclamation and being that it's a national thing. Um, I just wanna basically say that those of us that are visually impaired, eyeglass wearers for distance or near correction, please know that because we can see now, our brain is our first computer. So if you wake up one day or you turn and suddenly your vision vanishes, remember, your computer has an insight that if you just take a deep breath, you can almost see what you need to touch by memory. With that being said, I challenge everyone in here listening to my voice. Once night falls tonight, turn your lights off. See what you can accomplish if it's just no more than putting on your night clothes. You will be amazed at your own individual ability. Because as eyeglass wearers, when we don't have these around, we panic and the first thing we say is, oh my God, I can't see. You can see, you're not seeing as well as you would like to at that moment or because of your age, diabetes, whatever the case may be. So take good care of what you have and use it before you lose it. Uh, Councilwoman West made a comment about how proud she was of the things that we teach people. It's not just that we're teaching them, we're reminding them of their capabilities and their individuality. They don't lose that when they lose vision. We help them regain it through eliminating stress and fear. Fear is a big factor that can descend into so many other things, stroke, aneurysms, heart attacks. Because you lose vision, no, you're still that whole person. So be mindful of the gifts that you've been given individually and use them. We don't need any more clients. We want everyone to see well, but you're more than welcome to our facility. Anytime Mrs. Jones says you can come through, learn what you can, educate your children and your family. So if vision loss does befall you in your maturing years, you'll know how to handle them. You'll be able to teach them and not be catered to. That steals people's dignity. Keep your independence. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, just a friendly reminder, and Ms. Candy did not go over three minutes, but to everyone that's coming up to speak, there is a three-minute limit for uh, your public comments. So we ask that you be mindful and respectful of everyone's time here. Uh, next on the list, we have uh, Ms. Monica Jones.
I wasn't gonna say no because I said it earlier, but um, just to piggyback off our Candy. Thank you um, for continuing to observe white cane day. Um, and we hope that we will continue on with it. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, next we have Thomas Campbell.
I also would like to thank uh, you for recognizing um, our white cane. Um, most because it is truly um, a very valuable thing for visually and um, blind people that um, that are using our canes. And it does do the job that we need for it to do. Um, and it's just so important that um, people just recognize the importance of visually impaired and blind people because um, they're trying to live um, just a life that all of us are trying to get through each and every day. And um, it's just so valuable that we just take the time out just to um, put aside just um, the feelings that we might have, which might be negative that, you know, we don't wanna take the time to, to uh, to uh, recognize blind people as they come walking through or whatever at the traffic light or at the corner. But these canes do get us where we need to go. And we just, just want us, want you to be able to respect each and every blind person that walks through with a cane. So that's all I can really tell you. Now, thank you for um, again, recognizing um, white cane month for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have, I believe this is Ms. Azalee Mayfield.
Uh, good morning, everybody. I'm Azalee Mayfield, Chair of Chester Residents Concerned Quality Living.
Good morning.
Also a very concerned person about this community. Um, I've not heard yet um, a plan from council as to what you are doing to avert a bankruptcy and/or what you're gonna do in the event that the city does go into bankruptcy. I've heard no comments other than from Mayor Kirkland that bankruptcy is not what we want. But there is no plan that has been given to the residents as to what you are actively doing to either avoid it, um, stave it off, or how do we ride this wave through a bankruptcy and what it means to the community? There's been no commentary from the elected, elec- the, the, the local elected officials. And I think that this community really needs uh, an explanation and/or a plan. And it needs to be spoken to the community. People are uneasy about bankruptcy. Everybody knows that. But it's worse when the people who were elected to be the leaders are silent. And I just wanna know, what plans are you guys putting in place? Either way, if we have to do it or if we don't have to do it, what are the steps we can do to avoid it? Is it an inev- an inevitable action? But there has to be something coming from this council. Silence is not good enough. So, Mr. Deputy Mayor, since you're in the hot seat today.
Oh, no, that's fine. I was waiting for you to provide, give everything that you had. So I didn't know if that's, if that was it. So, but I can make a comments if you're ready. So. I'm not sure if other members of council have commented on it. Um, like you mentioned, the mayor said that that's not an option that we wanna go, go through. And I, I think I can safely say that I don't think any other member of council wants to go through bankruptcy either. I'm sure the community doesn't want us to go through bankruptcy. But I think there, no, I know that there has been things done over the la- over a few years to try to avoid that. Many like yourself and/or other members of council, I mean, other members of the community, know that we're in a, a deep hole. One that you won't get out of overnight unless there's really a big dump of money into our bank accounts or into the pension, really. Um, things that we've done over the previous years was changing our healthcare, uh, with retirees and actives. Um, as you know, we don't have the amount of men or women force that we once had here in the city of Chester. We had a big layoff. Uh, wasn't, we didn't bring everybody back. Uh, the American Rescue Plan did help with some of that. So there's been things that we've done to try to avoid that, but a hundred thousand dollars here, uh, two hundred thousand dollars there, really unfortunately, it doesn't help us. It really doesn't. So, um, in conversations that you may have seen in our MFRAC meetings, I know Mr. Vijay Kapoor, maybe the month of September, the MFRAC meeting is September, maybe August. He gave a very thorough, maybe one-hour presentation on bankruptcy and the city's financial stability currently right now. And I think even maybe at MFRAC meeting prior to that, he gave some options as to what we can do to try to avoid that. One of the ones was looking at the retiree pension plan, specifically the police retiree's pension plan. Another one was looking at the Chester Water Authority. As you know, that we're in current litigation with that as well. So those have been things that has been discussed over the last year, has been pushed out to the public with presentations. Uh, so there has been some things to, we tried, we've tried to do to mitigate that, but quite frankly, we need a large amount of money to right the ship in the right direction.
Yes, and I understand that, not understand what is said at the MFRAC meetings. I'm not talking about what comes from the receivers team. They aren't voted. Uh, 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 people don't elect them. You all were elected. And I think that you owe this community some explanations and a plan of action. There has to be a plan of action. You know, I have two other things as far as the ARPA money is concerned. How much money has been set aside so that our small business owners, our micro business owners can come and get those fundings through grants and/or loans. And what outreach has been done so that they know that that money is there? It has been earmarked for them and it's available. They are struggling. And if you're talking about building up downtown, we got businesses up and down there who don't know that those fundings, those monies are available to them and could help them. those monies are available to them and could help them. They've had to ride through COVID also. And if we can't find our small businesses, the people that are here struggling with us, then what is the purpose? Of another ARPA meeting if you don't have that money set aside for them? And they have to know it. And it has to be a, a process where they can come and apply for it. We, we talked about that in July.
Alright, um, so respectfully, I apologize, my phone didn't ring, but your three minutes has so fast, but I, I did want you to get.
I'm sure it has.
I said, you said you had two questions, so I know you heard, you spoke about the ARPA and the businesses, was that the questions that you had?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, um, you came to the first meeting, please, I hope you're available to come to the next meeting. Um, but in that first meeting, we didn't really dive into much of the budget, we wanted to provide uh, more detail about the American Rescue Plan and what it can be used for. I will say this here, but you'll hear more about it at the next meeting, uh, on October eighteenth at five P M. We do have money in the budget for businesses, not only for operational uses, but potentially looking to clean up their business on the facade and uh, exteriors and put maybe inside, I'm not sure exactly, but we're looking to create the criteria and the parameters around, around that for businesses. You may not know this either, but we also gave money out in twenty twenty to the business community, over fifty thousand dollars with the COVID relief funds and quite a bit of business, well, no, not quite a bit, all of the businesses in the community of the city of Chester were fully aware of that. We ran that through Entrepreneur Works and all of that money was gone within sixty days, so. Honestly, it wasn't, it wasn't a big part of money because we didn't have a lot to work with, but we're taking another opportunity with the funds that we have to push back into the business.
Okay, I appreciate all of that answer, fifty thousand dollars for a business is nothing. I'm sorry, if you got.
I'm sure those businesses appreciated that.
Talking about millions that could do. I know the parameters of ARPA.
Okay.
The business is.
And that's why we provided.
But that's why I'm saying, what outreach are you doing to make, to let them know that these funds are available? And what they're for, they're just not for.
We haven't, we haven't opened that door for the business community uh, project just yet, um, but.
Well, that's okay before all of the money is squandered away.
Yeah, well, it's, it's earmarked for that, so thank you.
Alright.
Um, next on the list, we have uh, Mr. Nita Littleton.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I just wanna first of all remind the city of Chester uh, residents who are here and maybe listening by uh, Facebook Live, this forum is set up for community residents to come in, to voice our concerns, to ask legitimate questions that we have, um, that we require answers to. Uh, so we want you to understand that and know that, that this is what these forums were set up for. And with that being said, I would like to ask again, um, I have like three questions, three or four, to ask this council to answer um, to the mayor's uh, statement, some council meetings ago, I've been asking about this, that you guys all agreed upon together unanimously to not allow working-class people like myself and Minamore in Chester City who would love to attend these meetings and sometimes cannot, to allow us to submit our questions via email. You said that all of you guys denied that, I didn't get a chance for you guys to speak to the fact of why you did deny that, being that this is the forum that you say you are welcome, transparent about for residents to get information, and so the mayor spoke in your behalf, if that's not true, I would love for you to uh, speak in your behalf today, uh, why that you guys are resisting residents like myself who's not able to get here to meetings, an opportunity to uh, submit a question via um, email. If that's something that cannot be resolved by you guys, we will be petitioning that, um, because I believe that it's important that the residents of Chester City is fully informed about what happens in our city, um, which leads me on to my further point about when there's things that are happening in the city, there's supposed to be procedures and policies where uh, the residents should be on the top of the list to be informed, uh, to be able to engage about our input, our questions, um, about anything that's happening in the city. That doesn't seem to be welcomed, and when we are presented with these particular legal meetings that are supposed to take place, we, we're presented with a concrete plan that is already set, really not uh, looking like it's open to our input. Uh, there's been several meetings that have happened here, and I know that the city is supposed to notify, and one of the, the methods that they use is the Daily Times, and I want to submit to the city that not everyone, or this council, that not everyone uh, has access to the Daily Times, and again, if we're talking about being transparent, really wanting to hear the voice of the people who elected uh, you as officers here in the city, um, that we try to use some type of communication me- 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 method that will include more people. It's really sad to see, and I know probably why, the people that probably have a voice in the city are probably at work at ten o'clock on a Wednesday morning. But it would be nice to know, um, be nice to, uh, for the city to, again, it goes along with what Ms. Lee was saying. Communication, I think, is really key, uh, when you really want to be transparent, you want people to be included, you do whatever you can to try to make sure that that happens, okay? And so again, there's a lot of times where things are planned, uh, they're taking place, and we talked about including all the stakeholders, well, the residents of Chester City who elected this council is one of, is, should be the top of the list of the stakeholders who have an input and have a say, I'll leave that at that, but I do wanna follow up to find out, uh, what's going on with the um, phone systems here, I mean, I, are we as residents, are we gonna get referred, returned phone calls, in particular, I've been calling L and I. Uh, I've called about picking up some trash, and nobody has returned my phone call, I don't know if they had the um, block of Nita Littleton, or is this something happening to everybody? But I have not received a phone call back, I don't have time to come over here like I used to, and so I just wanna know, um, are people gonna answer the phones and uh, respond to the requests that we put over the phones and if the phone systems uh, emails or uh, voicemails will be updated, uh, Bishop Richard Knox, uh, is still has a voicemail on the system, is he still the coordinator? Um, so there's just a lot of things, again, it's talking about communication and having things in place, um, and making it, you know, accessible for us to residents, it's really, it gets very frustrating. When you call in here and you're told to call in, this is what we're supposed to do, but there's no respond. So how do we as residents deal with that, um, or is there going to be something that you guys can do to make sure that we are gonna get returned phone calls? There's serious issues out here and nobody's calling us back about it. How do we follow up and I'll be right after this? I'm saying that, um, I'm not really sure whoever, if, if, if it's about picking up trash and, so, so yes, if whoever's department it falls under, I'm saying the calls that I've made recently, I have not got a returned phone call from anybody. There was um, some rubbish, I called in about like some rubbish. I had about over five phone calls, I log everything that I do, Councilwoman West, and no one has returned my phone calls yet. I actually saw a city truck going by and saying.
Recent where these phone calls, and if so, can you.
Within the last couple of weeks.
Provide us with the dates and times of that so we can look into it?
Okay.
Did, you said no one answered the phone call, so you left a voicemail?
Yeah, I left a voicemail for L and I, I left a voicemail for, uh, I, I guess that there's a general message now, even, I don't even know if you can go into departments, you call a number, so, okay, well, my voice is out there, you guys maybe, can you guys pull the calls and see? I mean, but you can, that's something you can do, I'm, I'm quite sure you can trace all the calls, so if you would just mind pulling them, you definitely will know that I've called. Um, and so this trash has been sitting in some bags in the front, and I even saw one of the trucks come by and I'm like simply, hey, listen, I've been calling in, maybe you guys are busy, haven't been able to get it.
Well, I'm sorry to cut you off, but I wanna make sure that Councilwoman West's question is clear because she's asking about if it's like trash for J P Mascaro or if it's, are you looking like bulk trash?
I don't know who it's for, but it was, I called in, I'll, I'll ca- I called in, uh, Deputy Mayor. I called in to the department that handles picking up trash, okay? I left a message indicating, um, basically, it's just for this one particular um, incident was, we, we cut the grass on the house next door to us that caught on fire on May seventeenth, because it's been, um, un- nobody has been keeping up that lawn, okay? So we cut that grass, I put the grass in a bag, picked up all the trash, which I do on a daily basis, okay? And I was already exhausted that day, so I bagged it up and put it right there in the front on the curb and called the city numerous times and asked them, could they pick it up? Okay, in front of the house where I picked up the trash from, I left the addresses as well. Three thirty-four West Ninth Street, three three-two West Ninth Street and three three-four, so, um, yes.
I'm sure Councilwoman. But let me get back to, you talked about transparency. Um, I think that this council has been tran- very transparent, um, over the years, I really believe that, and we have come into the ages of uh, technology and, and websites and internet. So, yes, sometimes it's required for us to put information in public circu- circulation, such as newspaper of the Daily Times. But that's not our only place that we put information. We also use our social media platforms such as Facebook. I'm not sure if you follow Facebook, our, our Facebook page or if anybody else does, please do. We also have an e-newsletter. Ms. Amanda Johnson, every month, probably within the first day of every month, there's an e-newsletter that is a ton of information from the prior month and there's things that's upcoming from, of the new month, uh, so.
Talking about, are you talking about community events, are you talking about, um, meetings where you have to have public input? Like, um, the sewer line that Dale Cora wants to do or meetings like, okay, so that's on the website in enough time?
Are you subscribed to our newsletter?
Um, I believe, so I, I check the site regularly.
The newsletter sends you an email every month of everything that has happened from the previous month and the upcoming month, things that are happening. And I see Ms. Amanda is shaking her head because, yes, the information from the Dale Cora meeting, I think that happened in September, was actually in that uh, newsletter. So please, if you're not subscribed or if anybody else that needs to get subscribed and subscribe and doesn't have the information, uh, readily, readily accessible in a newspaper or whatnot, please subscribe to the newsletter because that's the new way of how another source that we can provide information outside of Facebook and outside of the newspaper.
And that wasn't my, that wasn't my main point, the point is you have.
I wanted to add to one of your.
I, I just said, that wasn't my main point, sir. Okay, in addition to that, it's not just us being notified sometimes at the last minute about the meetings, it's when we have these meetings. There are already decisions being made in behalf of our voices, and we don't have the input. What you're coming to do is present to us what you're going to do, and that's not an authorized public meeting to ensure that you have the inputs, and I'll just say this, if these residents don't know this, we better get to know this, and we better get to mandating that our input matters, and whatever we have to do to make sure that that's clear to council, whoever's building in the city, that we have our input and that it is recorded legitimately. Because we will ask whoever the authorities are who handles that part to check every meeting. Okay, you have got to allow the people and the residents of Chester City to have a real input, not come present us a plan without us saying, oh, by the way, or even getting, having a, um, and maybe not in this setting, but there's times in meetings that I've been in where they have an issue, and that's why I, I begin to speak out to say, this is the forum that is created for us as residents to do exactly what I'm doing. I'm not causing trouble, I'm doing what this forum is set up for, so ask questions to get a clear understanding, and there's nothing wrong with that. And we have to make sure that people understand that, okay, that you're not getting attacked or people think that you're doing something wrong, we're asking legitimate questions for understanding. We better understand what's happening in the city we, we live in.
Ms. Littleton.
Yes.
Respectfully, your time has passed.
Okay.
So you've given me all of, or given council all of your questions, comments, concerns, and we hear you loud and clear because the residents should have their voice prepared, whether it's in the council meetings or it's any other public forum that is not here in this council chambers. Uh, I also know that there was not mentioned, uh, what a Dale Cora meeting, but there was a meeting with the Stormwater Authority. That was something that the public came out and voiced their concerns about plans that may happen in the city of Chester. Even prior to the announcement of the Philadelphia Union, there were six community meetings, two or three that happened here, and then others that happened in the areas of the Philadelphia Union where we were looking to develop, and that happened in twenty nineteen, so. What I will say is that there are multiple public forums that are happening outside of public, outside of this council room and that are happening inside the communities that people are always welcome to go to and voice their opinions, concerns, thoughts, because we want your input because you're a part of this community and you all are here to stay, so. With that, I hope that we can move forward, and if you have any other questions, please send us an email or give us a call. Um, but I do respectfully would like to get to the rest of the.
Okay, but can you guys please finish answering my questions, I wanted the answer about the email? Okay. Okay, and.
From my department.
Okay.
For L and I, for public, um.
Okay, who's over L and I, which council person?
Um, my L and I person is right there.
But Councilwoman Williams. Similar to what Councilwoman West is saying, if you're making phone calls and you're not getting uh, phone calls returned and you're leaving voicemails, we have to look into that. So we, we did fix our phone lines, I think that was a concern a few months ago, there wasn't going to the, the correct people. But now if we have problems with individuals not returning the calls, then we'll look into that.
Okay, well, I had, like I said, I did call L and I, I see Mr. Gary Collins is here, maybe have a few minutes after this council meeting to have a conversation with me, okay? Um, well, the, the, the people, the workers next door, they kindly picked it up 'cause I asked them while they're doing that work, please keep the yard clean, but there is a couple of bags that are still at the three, three-four area on the front there, okay? And about the emails, questions submitted, can you guys address that? Today Public, I've asked it several times, why are you guys against residents, um, submitting email questions when we're not able to make it to a ten o'clock meeting?
Ms. Littleton.
I was, I'm going.
I, I want you to understand that we're not trying to ignore anybody, but every last one of us sitting up here, we're doing our own work, we're doing our work, uh, and, uh, uh, we are winning. So, Ms. Williams, I'm not saying you're not, that don't put words, I'm not implying that. All I'm saying is when I, when we as residents call, can we get returned phone calls? This is what I would like this council to stop doing, is being defensive, I am not implying that you guys are doing nothing. I've never said that for the record, please understand that, I did not say this council was not doing nothing. Again, I'm utilizing this, this forum that is open for us to get clarification. When I call in, there's no one calling me back, so I'm asking council to please address that and I'll take my seat. Thank you very much.
Address that. Um, look, getting back to your emails, um, I'm not sure of other council, but I receive emails often from members of, of the community. Now, they don't necessarily say, can you speak, ask this question or provide this question to the public. Um, I necessarily just provide them a, a answer and or they give me a phone call or they come in, they schedule a meeting, they come into my office and sit down and we talk, talk through it, so. I do receive uh, e- uh, comments or questions about the public meetings or about anything that's going on uh, via email and or via phone call, so. I, I can't speak for others, but also in those emails, it doesn't say, can you, can you bring this to the public? I will just say that. I, I understand your points, Ms. Littleton, Ms. Littleton, I do understand your points, please, and we've had this conversation and I understand, I understand what Mayor Thaddeus Kirkland had mentioned in a previous meeting, and we, we as council members of council, we will discuss that again. But I'm telling you that we do receive emails, or I do receive emails, and it does not specifically say to voice these emails or this question or this comment via public meeting, it does not, alright? We will, we will discuss that, members of council will discuss that, Ms. Littleton, we've heard your comments, we've heard your questions. No, I'm not, I understand exactly one hundred percent. I understand what you're saying, I totally, one hundred percent understand what you're saying, and all I'm saying is, members of council will sit and discuss if that's the direction that we're looking to go into.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Littleton.
Ms. Sheen Malacy.
Good morning, how are you?
Good morning.
I also had the same question regarding the transparency, basically, will the council allow the constituents to submit our questions mail or online to coming meetings? Is that something that the council will allow the residents to do? And I noticed you guys also said some of the information is on your website. Do you guys post the agendas for the meetings on your website, 'cause I did not see them, I was looking for today's agenda, it was not on the website. So I don't know if there's another place where you have your uh, agendas before the meeting, so we know what's gonna be on.
Yes, they are, they are posted on the website, I'm not sure if it's a specific tab on the website to find it, but it is posted on the website. And it's, and it's.
Okay, I didn't see today's meeting on there, I looked last night and I, I wasn't sure where to find it, I went through several tabs and was not able to find.
I'm not sure where, but um, we'll speak to uh, uh, our, our press secretary to find out where that's listed at. Um, she's shaking her head to say it was posted, but I'm not sure, but it's also posted on our social media on Facebook as well, we usually post it there as well, so. But I'll, before you leave, or if you wanna speak to Ms. Amanda Johnson, just so you can know exactly where to find it, um, when typically.
Check on it, 'cause I am following on the Facebook page too, and I didn't see, see it on there, so I will look and try to find those agendas. So basically, yeah, so allowing, so are you, would you guys allow the residents to present questions at the council meetings via email or Facebook Live, however they're streaming it now?
We're, we're gonna talk about that and see how we uh, look to move forward, so.
Okay.
Think that's the, unfortunately, I won't be able, I won't provide a concrete answer on that, but we will discuss it in a.
Okay, and then my next um, issue, I know someone had spoken about it at several meetings ago regarding the traffic and the speeding. Um, yesterday afternoon on Ninth Street between Fulton and Barclay. I witnessed a woman get hit by a car. Thank God she was okay, but there has to be something done, there needs to be a traffic camera. on Fulton Street and Ninth Street, between those two schools, a young lady was crossing the street. Those cars are flying down that street, I was sitting in my car several nights before that. I just pulled into the parking lot to stop, in the parking space to stop. A car flew past me, must have been going seventy, eighty miles an hour. Thank God there was no one out there that day, there has to be something done about this traffic and this speeding. Especially maybe getting some speed cameras or something there, Ninth and Fulton, so many cars run through that red light all hours of the day. And it was just heartbroken, breaking yesterday to see that young woman get hit by that car. So please, I'm asking the council to please do something about the speeding, get policemen out there, get cameras out there, get something out there on these streets. Thank you.
And I'll just add to that, I know um there was a call that myself and Councilwoman West sat on with the the Penn Dot uh about a month or two ago and I, I'm pretty sure we discussed some uh traffic calming and and safety measures that needed to happen around the school area. Um and I know Mike Alante, he's let, he left now, but I know that there were some discussions that they were looking to see what immediate uh options that they had to try to help with that, so um I hope, I I'm I'm hopeful that something can happen immediately. Um I'm I'm glad that the young, the individual was was, I guess, not injured uh to some degree, well. Okay. Yeah.
It's a state.
Yeah.
It's a state road too and we have to go through uh Penn Dot and the state and what have you to um do certain things on Ninth Street, you know? So but we are looking into that and have been in discussions and waiting to hear back about what they're gonna do.
Yeah.
The few little things that we could do, we did do, but uh
Yeah.
It's still not enough, we, I I drive past there all the time and I know, I'm slowing down and everybody's, you know, riding up on me, you know? I I know what you're talking about, so it is, it is a We'll continue to press them, you know, about it and try to get some answers for you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, um I think Arnold, Arnold Thomas? Uh sorry.
Uh good morning, council.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm here standing before you this morning uh with an issue that we've been dealing with in our community. Uh I'd like to also thank Councilwoman West, Portia West for working with us, helping us and showing that she cares.
More than once.
And I'm not saying the rest of the council doesn't care, you know, we all have issues and jobs we have to deal. But I just wanna thank you for the bound my heart, for the support that you have gained, Nora and I, and you more familiar with our case.
And also you listed that.
Well, we hear this morning about, we have a serious rotan problem. And it's been bred breathed through twenty-one-nineteenth West Tenth Street. The lady hasn't put her trash out over three weeks, she don't put out thirty or
About forty bags of trash.
I have some pictures that I took on my phone, I would like to share with you this morning. I done caught ele- eleven rodents, mice in my house, I had to come down one morning with four eighteen. I'm a retired and my wife is retired, we keep our prop, we are very proud of our residents. Our community we live in is a well-kept up community, Portia can tell you that. We are very clean, clean people, we should have had to go to them. We dealt with LNI when Mr. Collins, we spoke to him last Thursday. He he talks a good, he talks the talk, but he ain't walking the walk doing it.
He promised to um bring a truck and pick up the trash on Friday. He didn't, she didn't pull the trash to the curb, she haven't done it in three weeks. And it's a lot of lot of animals in that trash, so we need help. You know, and she's still having in her yard, she don't have it, of course.
And the the city has tagged the the house, they don't supposed to be in there. She got nine people living in the house and you can't tell me you can't take the trash out. You know, I have to go, we have to go get a sterminator, we got a sterminator coming back to our house this month, the nineteenth, next week. And apparently, she needs help. The the girl has a mental problem, she got to, cause nobody wanna live in filth. Now, she don't do, she doesn't do anything.
Nothing. She don't even clean the paper from front of her door, she don't sweep the stuff, she does nothing for the community. And everybody is complaining about rotan in the neighborhood and it's getting worse. And it's some by the back door too, didn't take pictures.
There's even more out there since last.
Yes, yes, she put it out every week and don't pull it to the curb. It's still in New York. It's really bad and it's bringing down our neighborhood. And he have a sign on the door to keep out, but the family is still in the house, he has condemned the house. Cause the house is really bad, she crying and trying to stay in there, but it's, we really need help. And she's, her house is ruined, so.
Well, that's just a book, that's a ruin, but but he, no, he 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 has pictures of the trash that's out there.
Yeah.
Can you show him the trash?
Cause I have reported that that there was trash being put in the backyard.
Yeah.
And uh it's even more out there now.
She brought more on Saturday and Monday too after the trash people left.
And she's still going in and out of the property.
Right, she's in there, it's nine people, she move a family from Ohio in there also.
When you say she, is is this the landlord or is this the tenant?
What happened was the the owner of twenty-one-nineteenth, the grand, um the the el- the grandmother she passed away a few years ago, so then her daughter took ownership of the property. But the daughter has moved to Florida and left her daughter in there.
Right.
And her daughter is literally tearing up the property. And I've been there myself and I saw trash up to the windows, I could see it, I went around back, it's trash up to the windows.
I guess my question is, if we know, are they cleaning out the house for the individual to move or are they just cleaning out to get right? They still trying to live there, yeah?
Looking at Saturday and so far, the house is really, really bad.
And it has a bad smell coming from it.
Okay, um Mr. Collins, your ma?
Yes, uh just uh can I?
Yeah.
Yes, so you and I, we spoke and I've been handling the situation. We sent, it was my guys that went over, posted the property. Um and then we, it was a, we tried to come up with a plan to because we were told that the residence is mentally unstable. We have no way of knowing that, I cannot, I cannot say that a person is mentally unstable and remove her from her home. So we created a, we came up with a plan to try to evaluate as best we could. I went to the residence myself and when I went to the residence, she came to the door, I could see in the house some cleaning had been done, so I could see clear back to the kitchen and she was talking normal. I spoke with our COO, um and so we came up with some ways that maybe the city can help the situation by maybe we can use some monies to send a cleanup crew to clean out the rest, the basement, if I have to put a work order in for the trash to be removed from the back. So we have a plan in motion that may help this citizen, we don't wanna do this all the time but since the person is
He's a mess in the whole row of homes.
Yeah, correct, correct, the other people are not here today, cause they don't wanna come forth. But we can't hold back no longer, cause I'm afraid of those mice. I I can't walk through my house here too, I had company to my house this weekend, I pray so the mice won't come out. You know, if they, I even seen a rat in my house and that's really bad. And it just devastated to me at this point, I'm not enjoying my own home at this point, so, cause I'm afraid to stay there.
So we are in a process of doing something about the situation, something that may not involve dragging a person out of their home at this particular time. So we 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 are actually forming a plan to have it, the situation may be over very soon. So we have, you seen the post, you see that expect is coming, I'm telling you where we are in in the process, so I would just ask that you would give us just a.
Well, can you remove the trash? Even if you remove that, I feel better.
Maybe the man, Councilwoman West, can work to get that done, I'll put a work order, whatever we need to do.
And where we gonna put that trash, cause that trash would come down to my location down at Dock Street where my men muster, okay? And you taking um 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 trash that has mice and rats and stuff like that in it. So then you're going, then my place, Dock Street's gonna be infested.
When is um, when is your trash day, uh your your?
Just on Monday, she gonna miss three weeks for taking out the trash, three weeks. And she got two feet container there too.
Yeah, just, I I think, uh uh so, thank you. We will convene and see what we can do to try to help with the immediate, uh I guess, removal of the tr- trash bags and things like that that's in the yard, it's it's tough, cause it's, it is on private property. Um but I I think that we'll we'll see what we can do to try to make that happen, um your trash day has passed, but we'll see what we can do.
And we need a house exterminated and she's tough, she says she don't want my um rat poison in the house because she have a bunny rat.
And we need the house exterminated. And then I know there was a question asked of me as to what the surrounding neighbors are doing about having your places exterminated, I know that you've had your places exterminated.
Yeah.
But it's not gonna do any good if they exterminate theirs and this place is not.
Right.
Okay.
And she want you may accept the rat poison and we need more too. And it's very smelly too, you can't go near the door.
That is.
She clean, she does a hand money, but you can order stuff from Amazon every day, you can never.
And each child have a cell phone.
Let us, we'll we'll, we'll make some progressive steps to try to remedy the.
Do it as soon as possible.
We will, we'll convene as soon as possible and see what we can immediately do to try to help with that, so um. Uh understood, well. I I I've seen it come through my email over the last week or two, so I know that there's something progressive going on and this is the first I've heard about it over the last two weeks, so. I know you're hearing that, it's been going on for a few months, Councilwoman has has mentioned to me, it's been going on for a few months. So I'll make sure that those, and I know that they're on it as well, I'll make sure that we put uh some power behind our departments to make sure that we can do what we need to do and exercise all options.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Um with that commissioner. Um I just like the community to know, October is domestic violence awareness month. Um one thing I am very pleased about, we do have a satellite office in our police demo apartment from DAF on the third floor, if you need any type of information uh please stop by, make an appointment. Uh also, to the Upper East End residents who I met with at a Warner University meeting last week. I do have a plan in place, we will have a detail set up for this Saturday, it is Winer's Homecoming. I fielded a lot of complaints, but we will be prepared and lastly, I will be meeting with uh Chester High School staff in reference to Chester High's Homecoming, that will be the following Saturday on the twenty-second. We will have um a plan set up in place, so everyone has a safe, fun day. And one thing I will say, nobody doesn't like Chester High's Homecoming, thank you. Go Clips, I think they're six and O on their way, looking to be seven, they got a big test this weekend, so go support them, student athletes. Um with that, with that being said, uh there is any, there are not any other uh comments, so this council meeting is now adjourned.